There may be times that that classroom, we may decide that they would move to 100% remote for a few days, teacher and students. If it was a larger group in the building, that may force us to take a whole building and make that building remote.
Okay.
And I had the opportunity to participate in the Department of Health and Human Services call last week, and they were really adamant, and they mentioned it quite a few times, that when you have a positive case, if that information comes to us through a parent, we need to contact DHHS right away so that they can guide us through that process of what that's going to look like. They're going to ask a lot of questions, as Andy had pointed out, to be able to do that contact tracing. But I really walked away from that meeting last week feeling like we're not an island, that we really will not have to make this decision on our own. We'll have, you know, professionals that will be able to guide our decision making.
Under the situation where we might get challenges or refusals regarding mask wearing, does that escalate to you and stops at that point? Andy, or do you see that going beyond?
Well, it first escalates to the building principal, okay? If it goes beyond that, it would come to me. My conversation, if it was truly not willing to wear a mask unless it was under the 504 IEP or the health plan, I would have a conversation about moving to remote. And I am checking because there is some language in the state law that talks about situations that already exist like this, because this is not necessarily the first health emergency school districts face. You know, measles, mumps, none of them are as big or as scary as COVID-19, but there are pieces in place and processes in place that we have to follow.
Do you feel you have the tools to be able to handle those things?
When you, as a board, adopt the plan, you're then giving your principals and your SAU administration the authority to enforce the plan.
Okay. Thank you. And for the exemptions, are these exemptions still? So that talks about the mask piece, but is the social distancing still enforced for those exemptions? So for the individual?
Yes. Now, also recognize that, let's say it was a child who had, I use autism, so they might struggle to keep a mask on. They might also struggle with the cognitive ability to know what six feet is. So many of our floors in that will have dots added, arrows added. Each tile is six feet. Some kids will get that right away, others will need time. We'll be putting dashes down, different things to help students.
Okay.
And that would actually become part of that child's kind of IEP, because again, it's part of their education process for a life skill.
Okay. Thank you.
May I ask about the statistic keeping? Will we be collecting statistics on positive cases, presumed cases? Will we be keeping? Will that be public knowledge? Not the individuals' names, obviously, just numbers?
Yeah, the, one of the questions, it was one meeting, I can't remember which one anymore. We had talked a little bit about the SNAP program, which is our nurses', and we had originally planned to transition to Power School. What we're doing is we're going to run simultaneous software. Power School will be the piece where the parent will log in in the morning, and that information will come into the administrator. The SAU is expecting the administrator and the nurse to have a daily talk based on that sheet, and it gives us some built-in redundancy. All the nurses' office will be tracked by SNAP. So Tammy Free came down at 9:10, this, this, and this, and we always have that data, and that data is kept. It's obviously very, very confidential, but in terms of general reporting of number of cases, that's a potential. I wouldn't want to just sit here and say we had one, because in a small community like this, everybody might know who it is, and that's not our intent to highlight a child.
No, of course not.
Yep.
So on that same point with the Power School submissions, somebody forgets to do it, they didn't do it, are they stopped first thing in the morning from coming in? Do they get flagged? At what point do they get flagged?
Sure.
And what is the time deadline that a parent has that they, you know, you've got to fill it out by 8:15, for instance?
Sure. So it would be before 8:15. But as I had mentioned, it's within the registration portal, the Power School portal, they complete it. The administrator gets a few reports. The first report is who has said yes to these, and we don't expect to see them in the building. And then that goes to the, to our nurse, who can then follow up and get more information. There's the no pile, and that means they're going to come. And then there's the didn't respond, and we hope that that is small. And then we hope it'll be smaller and smaller and smaller as we get more used to this new normal. But those folks will need to be contacted directly by our staff, and so it is important that this process take place before students arrive so that we have enough time to either contact the families and figure out what is going on, and go through those protocols, the symptom monitoring, and/or find them before they enter their building, just to ensure that they, yes, are free of symptoms.
Thank you for clarifying that. It wasn't abundantly clear in your presentation. Those are all pre-arrival things. We've talked, obviously, a lot about face coverings. You also have talked a lot about instruction outside, you know, trying to have classes not just recess or recreation, but actual instruction. Will face coverings be required outside during instructional periods?
If we can social or physically distance, which we're outside to get fresh air and to be distanced and to kind of room-free and be separated, no, they will not be.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that as well.
I had one question relating to the guidelines. So I think it's important to state the guidelines in this rather than just reference them, so I definitely get the value of that. However, if the guidelines changes for whatever reason, they get more stringent, or, God willing, they get less stringent because things are getting much, much better, what is your feeling to the extent that by having this written in this plan will bind us to not being able to flex?
Well, I think the whole purpose of the plan is that there's flexibility so that we can move quickly as guidelines change. And that's why, you know, some of the wording is when we say things like "social distancing" or "physical distancing according to CDC standards," because if those standards change, we don't have to go back and rewrite the plan.
Okay.
And so there's, there'll be a constant evolution, you know, that I envision this changing from week to week as we enter the school environment and we determine what some of the new variables are.
And if we were to make this-
Rob, is it possible to date? You know, for example, the language could be this "as of so-and-so date" in order to make clear that this is what, at the time of publication, this is the current guidance, and it could change depending on state-
Yeah, I'm just, there are some specifics here as we're calling out today's guidelines, but they might change, right?
Absolutely. And I would say that, you know, the first line, "all DHHS guidelines, blah, blah, blah", will be adopted. And then maybe we make a new bullet right below that. At the time of printing, this includes, and if guidelines change and the advisory committee, along with our nurses, feel that we are going to continue to follow DHHS, which has, let's say, new guidelines, then we're going to send out a communication so that it's very clear we've updated our return to school based on changes in the guidelines, and here they are.
I see. So as they change, we can alter the document, or?
Yeah, I mean, I think this has to be a living document.
Yeah.
Perhaps we could add that line? Guidelines will be updated and sent to families?
I would think if we put it in the document, that's fine, but the intent of the administration is if next week they changed, we would be emailing, blasting out, and posting to social media and everywhere, the update. So I don't want to necessarily define, overdefine things and reduce flexibility. Because again, if they change next week, and we don't have a board meeting scheduled, I don't want to necessarily have to come back to the board for permission for something that Health and Human Services is doing.
Right.
Whereas what we would just do as administrators is make that call because it came from the medical authority who's in the plan.
Yeah.
Well, Andy, I think Rob's point, though, says, for example, it says "all DHHS guidelines for schools for symptomatic students and staff will be adopted, period." The next sentence says "this includes," and then there's specific things.
Yeah.
So I think that's what you're referencing, Rob, that kind of thing?
Yeah, I think that's what I want to make sure that-
So just wondering if there's a date of something that gives you more flexibility.
Yeah, we're not binded to old guidelines, and we, you know, I don't want to have to kick off another deep board review every time we need to make changes, right? So it's obvious that the guidelines are changing, we move to the guidelines.
Right.
I think even to your point, we could add the word "these currently include," knowing that we're going to operate off of the most current standards, or not standards, guidelines.
Or they could be excluded and give the reference of where to find current guidelines can be found at.
Well, the only thing is you lose a little specificity in the document. So I'm kind of like on the fence, because I like that people don't have to go double-clicking all over the place, but they have to understand, we move to the guidelines. Don't throw an old plan at us if we're moving or changing.
Well, I think "as of date," as Tammy recommended, was something I was thinking about as well, is perfectly appropriate, as well as just simply adding in the summary at the beginning of the deck or at the beginning of this PDF. This is a living document, it will be amended as conditions change, as everything else, like just very plainly state it, and then put that "as of" date when you are calling things out. I think that would be very helpful. Latest and greatest kind of thing.
Yep.
Any other comments or concerns or questions relating to health and safety?
I have one.
I do. Sorry.
Last call? We're moving on soon. Just letting you know.
Yeah.
By all means, go ahead.
Thank you to our principals from HPS and Hughes for your presentation. Very specifically, Candy called out that the Hughes library would allow for checking out of books. Will the HPS library also be open in some way for the students to utilize or to check out books?
Yeah, so all specialists are going to be pushed in this year, but there will be a way for students to check out books. So we have our, we have a destiny where kids can go on and order books and get them ready, and we can have them delivered to the classroom. Because of our spacing issues, our library may have to be used for different things this year, so we're working on figuring that out, but kids will have access to books, absolutely.
Great. Thanks for the clarification.
I had one question, just going back to Power School. Is it possible for families to maybe set up a reminder that they get an email to fill out that daily symptom checklist?
My thought was that it was going to go out every day with the link, so-
Okay. Perfect.
Whether you, you know, and you can opt out of it as well, but-
Okay.
That just does that reminder.
Could you talk a little bit more about under, when it says for remote learning, the last bullet said workforce availability?
Could we go, we were going to go by section.
Oh, yeah.
That is in this section.
We were last call on the health and-
Health and safety.
I thought that was in health and safety.
No.
Oh, sorry. You're right. I'm sorry.
Well, that's a good segue, though.
Because if we're going to go there, get right.
Moving on to instructional.
I scrolled way ahead. I thought I was under health and safety.
By all means, now we're instructional. Go right ahead.
I was thinking of the teacher's health. That's why I thought it was in the right place.
No worries.
Was there anything else then from others under health and safety?
Did you, that was yours, but-
You can go ahead.
I mean, if we, if you want to ask, are you asking about the explanation of workforce availability?
Yeah, flush that out a little bit more of what, when it says workforce availability.
Sure. So there are, you know, we definitely heard, well, when are we going to pivot? Why would we pivot? What's the threshold? And there are so many different factors. There's no formula for that, but these are the questions or the possible reasons why we might need to pivot. And one of them is workforce availability. If our staff, for whatever reason, can't come in, whether they were exposed or, you know, who knows, then we can't operate in person if we don't have the staffing for it. So that would force us to be in remote.
I guess that was, so is that assuming that they are available to teach remotely? I guess that was the clarification. I wasn't understanding if there's a scenario where we pivot, that schools are closed and we're not in remote either?
No, no, the pivot to remote from in person.
Okay. Well, so I, and so that is assuming those, the workforce is available for remote instruction, but not in-person instruction?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, I think you have to think about it as a remote class doesn't have limitations like a physical class does. So as long as there are remote teachers available as well, if there was an illness where the teacher couldn't pivot to remote and had to be actually out on leave, thought about that?
I think, Brooke, were you asking if there's, if we had a really huge spike in teacher illnesses, so we didn't actually have enough teachers-
A workforce. I wasn't sure if that was, yes.
Capable of teaching in any setting.
I mean, there is that potential. I mean, if we had 15 staff members who were not well enough to teach either face-to-face or remote, then we would be closed. We would work diligently to see if we can get subs, but at the same time, that will be a difficult process if it's that magnitude.
I guess, so in relation to that, in the survey that parents filled out, I know I filled it out, but I don't remember, it was a while ago, was there questions specifically asking about a hybrid model? And also, is there any teacher feedback on the concept of a hybrid model?
Yes, I did ask about a hybrid model, and there was very-
Candy, could you? Candy, we can't hear you.
I did, I did ask a question about a hybrid model.
I'm sorry.
There was very little interest in it. In fact, in the, anything, the last question I asked was something to the effect of, is there anything else you'd like to offer? There were very strong opinions against it from the survey, so there was that. And then depending on which subcommittee you discussed it with, from a health and safety perspective, that was not sought as a good option because you're doubling the exposure for teachers, because you have twice as many kids coming on different days. From a facilities perspective, you have different groups coming in at different times, changing the cleaning requirements. From an instructional perspective, they felt that that was not a good option because you were essentially cutting the potential instruction to less than half. So across the board, it was not deemed to be a desirable option.
Could you clarify, how is it cutting the instruction to less than half?
Sure. So if I'm in person with Group A on Monday and Tuesday-
Uh-huh.
Then Group A is at home Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. On potentially Wednesday, Thursday, or Thursday, Friday, whichever model you adopt, you're in person with Group B. You can't not, you cannot be doing your video lessons, et cetera. You can't be doing two things at once. So you're teaching Group A lessons for two days, and then Group B lessons for two days. The other possibility is if Group A is in school on Monday, Tuesday, Group A is now home Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. The ability to travel and have greater exposure is just increased based on the number of days you would not be confined.
But the same teacher could be with the same kids, both in person and remote, right?
How?
That they remain with their teacher while they're in school, and then a different group of kids is in school.
So Teacher A teaches her 23 students on Monday in person, and then teaches her 23 students on Tuesday remote, and on Wednesday in person, and on Thursday remote, and maybe on Friday, everybody's remote.
I think one of the goals of the hybrid model is to, one of the goals of the hybrid model is to reduce the total number of students in the building.
Correct.
And so if you have 23 students in person in your class on Monday-
Right, but if you split the entire student populate, sorry, in half, call it half, could be thirds, because you might have populations who are out for full remote learning, et cetera. Let's say everybody who's planning on being not full remote learning. Instead of saying that Teacher A is teaching a topic twice to two half-classes, I can picture Teacher A is teaching that teacher's entire class, but half the building is in on Monday, and the other half of the building is in on Tuesday, with a whole different set of teachers and a whole different set of students. So at the elementary level, obviously at the middle school and high school, that's a very different challenge, but that, we're not sitting on the co-op board here.
Right. And I think we're looking at the outdoor space.
So that you have significant spacing gains, you'd have significant stress gains, you'd have significant opportunities. In my mind, I know you guys are the education experts, I don't mean to tell you your business, but in my mind, it changes the volume of people in this building, for example, and changes the opportunities for distributing them throughout the building. The cleaning staff is still confronted with cleaning the entire building, et cetera, but it rotates exposure, and it dilutes, diffuses risk, and allows for mastering a very long and onerous list of necessary practices. I'm 100% in favor of masks. A long list of remote learning practices, of new habits that we all need to develop, because the odds are reasonable that this bug, vaccine or otherwise, is going to be with us for some time to come in some form or another, and we need to master it. And we have this remarkable technology that allows us to talk to, you know, folks on the moon and folks in the space station, but we can't talk to ourselves across town. It's impossible that we don't. So I don't understand, I'm just going to go ahead and put it out there, I don't understand why we're going for a full-open model. I don't understand why we're not going for a hybrid model that reduces by half or so, I'm just using half as a very rough figure, of the number of people in this building, acknowledging that many kids and many parents who work need more than that, acknowledging that our special education and other student services recipients have very explicit and specific services that they require of us by federal and state law, never mind our own team's assessments. And I recognize that there are great many challenges to a hybrid model, but I cannot understand when the distancing guidelines and all the practices that we see around the world, where numbers drop in cities, in towns, in schools, it's because of distancing outcomes, that we're actually going forward with a full-open. I don't see how we can manage the risk as well as we could if we went through a hybrid model. And I say this with the greatest respect for everything you guys have done to put all of this together. It's very, very impressive. I know I'm second-guessing you, but I feel so strongly about this.
Well, first of all, I think you would have, in your scenario, workforce issues, because we're not going to have the perfect numbers. So I think that's number one. Number two, my colleagues who are opening up in hybrid models, first of all, their buildings are over capacity. So they're starting off with 100 children over capacity. We are not at either of our schools. Second, they are using state standards, 26 to 30 in a classroom. If we get just 20% that will not return, a kindergarten will have 15. Grades two and three would have 16, and a grade four, five, and six would have 19. Basically, the same number as my colleagues will get when they go to their two days a week and their three days a week. If we get the 30%, which is, when we did the original survey, it was 70/30. That would mean we'd have 13 in kindergarten, 14 in grades one and two, and 16 and 17 in grade four, five, and six. So under the hybrid model, I would have seven kids in kindergarten, seven kids in grades one and two, and eight children in grades four, five, and six, which is, if I was teaching, I would love that. But I think the numbers that we're talking about, which we don't know yet, all right, are very, very much in line with what you would see with the hybrid model. I have some great concerns with the hybrid model because I'm changing my children every other day or every two days. Because I think we can't, they're going to have to go someplace, first of all, for daycare, because many of our parents, there was a survey on Facebook, and I'm not a big fan of Facebook, but 404 people took it, 50 people said they needed face-to-face, 38% said they, excuse me, 50% said they wanted face-to-face, 38 said they wanted 100% remote, and 12 were the hybrid model. So it's, you know, and people haven't come out to talk about the hybrid model.
I've had a lot of correspondence about the hybrid model.
Oh, I-
And I agree that childcare is paramount of importance, but if we are basing how our schools operate on a foundation of providing childcare, I don't think that that's the foundation we should be building our decision matrix on.
That is not what we're basing it on. That is one factor. And, you know, I listened to a two-hour return-to-school UCSF Medical Center based on the most recent research that's out there, and what a greater determining factor for children getting COVID and sharing it with others is the community standards and how the community is open or not, and the community's response to mask-wearing, et cetera. So it's really the outside exposure more so, and so the more we can limit the outside exposure, the safer our students and our faculty are. And we have, I mean, we've looked at this from every aspect. We are never making a decision based on just one factor alone.
I wasn't, okay, I know. I'm not insinuating that it's solely on childcare, but if it's, I think that the guiding principles should be what will be the best educational and health and social-emotional outcomes for our children and our staff, right? And then-
I absolutely agree with you. I think the whole plan is based on self and health and safety. I think why I was comfortable going face-to-face is because where I believe our numbers will end up. I'm also very uncomfortable with the hybrid from a cleaning point of view, because I'm very concerned that if my child, now, went Monday and Tuesday, Wednesday through Sunday, they're going someplace. Grammy Grandpas, daycare, someplace, or they're staying home. But there's a percentage of families who are going to have to put them someplace, and that increases the risk. And that risk is brought back to the building, and it is here. It's on the table, it's on the mic, it's here. Now, granted, we're buying sprayers and misters, and we're doing everything we can, but to me, you're increasing the potential risk, and especially if you're looking at it from a K to 12, I mean, we're a K to six here, but I don't believe my seventh through 12th graders in a hybrid model are going to stay home. I think they may go to the mall, they may go visit each other, okay?
There's still hours of the day after school, though, as well. I mean, the kids are leaving.
It's true, but it's not-
You know.
Right, but typically at 3:30, parents have put in some protocol, maybe kids call home, there are a number of protocol. We're just opening this up to something that I think is much larger, and I think ultimately will not be safe.
Andy, could you talk more about the, you've mentioned this last time, a couple times, you mentioned it today, and I haven't had a chance to ask you. You've talked about, about some percentage, 20, 30% of families have already indicated in the original survey that they want full remote learning. And so we would dedicate some of our staff to that, full remote learning. That would be their job, and some staff would be the full in-person learning. Do we actually have adequate staff to do? I know you don't have the full numbers yet, you're going to do the registration.
We don't have full numbers on either side, Tammy, because as you know, we're in discussions with our workforce, and in all honesty, we could end up 100% remote if the workforce doesn't come back.
Okay.
Yeah. So just, I want to bring the conversation back to the document. I did want to leave enough time to kind of hash out a hybrid model, but it's clear that's not the model that's being brought forward. I'm certainly convinced that this has been looked at and not bringing forward to the board, whether we agree with it or not.
Right.
But this is, this is the model that they're, they're bringing forward. I believe that you looked at this, and you decided that's not the way we're going to go. But I wanted to give enough time to kind of hash through it a little bit and hear some of the, some of the rationale around it. So with that, I'd like to move on a little bit, because we've got a-
Well, if I could ask one final question based on what Andy just said, and that is on the workforce point. Are we having another meeting after this one where, or, I mean, we'll vote on this today. How will the board know the outcome of your discussions with staff?
Well, the August-
And whether, and what the, you know, what the consequential numbers are?
Perfect question, because the intent is to have a regular meeting in August, the mid-August, by then we'll have registration data, we'll probably have more knowledge around staff. And the board can choose any one of the three plans, because remote exists, so does hybrid, because hybrid is the easiest thing to do. We're going to know how many numbers we have, how many teachers. And if the numbers came out, I would simply divide 13 by two. One group is Monday, Tuesday of six, one group is Thursday, Friday of seven. Hybrid, the reason it hasn't been- Hybrid, the reason it hasn't been talked about the most is because out of the three models, if I have a full remote model and a full in-person, I can get to hybrid pretty quick, because 90% of the plan doesn't change.
Right.
Right, right.
You know? And just so you know, we know that there, from A to L, there are 1,166 kids across the SAU. And from K to Z, there are 1,170 kids. Across, we know all the numbers. So if you tell me you want to go hybrid, that's fine. We'll come back in August, and there'll be a group of people who will be here to tell us they don't want hybrid.
Yep.
If you tell me you want to go fully remote, I'll go fully remote. My job is to put together the plan that the five of you want to support.
Just to Rob's point.
What we're doing tonight is recommending the plan we think is best to meet the needs of the community, and trust me, I have heard from the community. Every day for the last about four months.
Yeah.
And it's a wonderful community, and they're totally supportive. But to think I don't have a good handle on what the community wants, I mean, people are not shy in our communities.
I didn't accuse you of not having a handle. I just wanted to ask when we would find out what the outcome was on staffing. That was all. Thank you, Rob.
So I have a question on my own during instruction. I really like the idea, and it's arguably, it's also calendar-related, but I really like the idea that we have a, like a practice day in case we need to pivot. So I think that's gonna be really important, because we all need a, you know, some time to be able to get comfortable with some of this. So I think that's gonna be very helpful. And I really like the added structure in the remote model that mimics, like you're here. I think that's gonna be huge, because I know, and I've gotten a lot of input, you know, in the spring when we were doing this, a lot of students suffered from the lack of structure, right? It was a lot of assignments and not a lot of interaction, so I think this is really gonna help. So I just wanted to point that out. Now, I did see the structure in the Hughes model, but what extent are we doing, or can we do that in the HPS case, if you will?
Yeah. So we just put up one remote schedule, both of ours would look very similar. It would model what would be happening in class as well. So we would have that teaching time, and then we would have that time where the small group would be met, specialists would happen, breaks, lunch, all that kind of stuff. So it would be, it would very much mimic. And the reason we did that is because we did hear that feedback, that we needed that structure and remote, so we knew that that had to happen.
Yeah, I can see the challenges of having that structure remote with the real little ones, right? They may need a little help.
We might, yes.
Yeah.
But hopefully, you know, when we do have those practice days, like I said, in class, we will be exposing the kids to those tools, so they'll be much more well-versed in making sure that when they do go remote, that they're more independent in accessing it, because they can if we teach them. So we have to take that step back and teach them the tools so that they're able to access it.
All the more value of our practice day as well. All right. Any other questions regarding instruction? By all means, go ahead.
Sorry, I have one last one. So I guess, given the 14-day quarantine required after travel, I guess I worry about the two weeks following Thanksgiving. And do we have a huge uptick in remote learners during those two weeks, and then also following, I guess, Christmas break as well?
I wouldn't disagree, but if you look historically during my tenure, we have higher absentee rates on those days anyways, because our families are going to Thanksgiving destinations with friends. We will make it clear, we're not looking for people to travel outside of New England. All of those, we'll be talking, you know, in communication with families, telling them that right up front, because one of the issues that we're seeing potentially at the co-op level is all of us who have to go drop students off at college. You know, and the college move-in date and two weeks don't necessarily align. So many families are already making the conscious decision that only one parent is dropping off that college student. So the communities have been responding really well. I was looking at it as more, you know, from the social-emotional piece, it's downtime, it's quality time with family, it's slightly easier, a lot of people have to use vacation up before and end of the year, the Thanksgiving holiday is a family gathering time. If you wanted to stagger those and put various days here and there, we're happy to do that.
No, I'm worried about the two weeks following. So if my family, say, travels outside of New England during the Thanksgiving period, and a lot of families do that same thing, then you're gonna have an increase, a huge increase potentially of remote learners during those two weeks following Thanksgiving if they are quarantining as suggested.
Yep. And again, that may create a workforce issue that we can't address, and we may have to decide to be remote for that period of time if it's going to be that many individuals, you know?
So that could drive a remote decision for a period of time.
Absolutely, for a period of time.
Interesting. Okay.
And I have one last question on remote learning.
Yeah.
Talking about the student and family expectations, invites to students will be sent to their saufortyone.org email address or Google Classroom. So is Google Classroom gonna be implemented across the board through HPS? And Hughes, I guess? Both of you, all of you?
Yeah, yeah. So that's the recommended tool, so that's a tool that we will be using. And, you know, we have implemented Google Classroom in the classroom over the past few years. I think you guys remember me requesting for us to do that. Plus, we have Mrs. Courier, who is our tech expert, who will be pushing into classrooms this year as well to help with that access to all of that. But yeah, we'll have access.
Okay. I'm just making sure that it's required, because I know it does not exist in all classes up until this point.
And the teachers today, we just kind of gathered to have a conversation about the reopening plan, and they're already making plans. They don't know who will be remote either, but their plans are, they're gonna participate in PLCs. So the remote teacher and the in-building teachers will still be planning together. They're still gonna be in step and sync, and a lot of the things that we're doing is going to be, you might have instruction, but go do that writing on Google Classroom. You don't need to put it in your paper pencil notebook anymore, right? So then just teaching them, teaching them all the time. And like Andy said, having that chance to even maybe, we might even open up and have a Zoom in-class, hey, open your Chromebooks or your, bring your own device, and they can see each other on their screen, and we'll still be together. So just having some practice with that as well.
Very cool. So just a, obviously during remote learning this spring, emails were sent to parents who then would filter it down. Is that system done? Is there some sort of email, or will everything live in Google Classroom then?
So I don't know the answer to that. I do know that we want to communicate in as many ways as we can to get kids what they need to do. So what tend to happen sometimes is, it would be in Google Classroom, then we'd also email the parents, then we'd also put it on the stream, because kids would say, I can't find the link. And clearly, when I would go in, in my co-teaching position, I could see it. So we were just trying to make sure that if a child couldn't find it, a parent could help by pushing it out. We don't want to over-communicate and annoy everyone, but when we don't do that, some kids just couldn't find it, and parents got frustrated. So just trying to get that balance. So I don't know, but we're gonna do what we can to make sure everyone gets the information.
Sounds good.
Like, on a pivot day, we're gonna have that planned schedule, you will have that sent home. Will you find it on the pivot day? Right? Like that's, you know, will kids know, like at 8:50, it's gonna be classroom, you know, connect time, and that they do that? We're gonna have told them, we're gonna have told you, but it still could be, I can't, you know? So we'll just keep trying to communicate as best we can.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Can I ask one last question? I'm so sorry.
Yeah.
This is such a fraught topic. I heard everything that's been said, I'm still not clear, because I'm slow. So I am teacher X, I'm an in-person teacher, and my, one of my students is out for whatever reason, including a two-week quarantine. That student has access to my live feed and can watch me in the classroom or not? That's.
No, that student does not. We would love to have Zoom rooms. I don't know if, you know, that's one of the discussions with the workforce.
Hmm. Do we have the technology to do it? Like, are there cameras in the classrooms as part of the, you know, boards or whatever it is?
They're on the computers.
Does he consider laptops or whatever?
The idea would be a Zoom opened up in the classroom.
Right.
Through the computer.
Right, okay. So that's not now part of the plan, that the live in-person teachers are also developing remote learning protocols for the remote learning students or their own in-person registered students who now have to be out? Those kids would get moved into the remote learning teachers?
They would have to move into the remote learning teachers.
I see.
Which is why we need to build in collaboration days.
Right, right.
So just a procedural note here, and let me know if you agree with this or not. Just trying to keep this moving. I want to get to the sections that have more substantive changes and red lines to. That doesn't mean we're gonna necessarily skip over. Things like technology, it hasn't changed. If we can come back to that, if you have something, or you can tell the bus driver to stop, I want to stop at technology, I have a question. Yeah, pull the, but if not, I would really like to get to the areas that have the changes, red marks, want to give them the time. So for now, unless somebody wants to stop at technology, I want to get to the human resources and some red line changes there, if that's okay. So let's open it up for human resource section. And it's okay if you don't have any questions.
This one's pretty straightforward.
I mean, I have a question, it's not on the red line, but it's regarding human resources. And I just wonder what sorts of supports we'll have in place for the mental health of our staff during the year.
We have a very solid program under human resources and health insurance, and we have access to whatever services we need. If that meant we could bring somebody in for PD because the staff wanted that, or those type of things, that could happen. I would also say that the teachers' union, from a state standpoint, has a number of resources, and there are times when we have collaborated with them if they have a great speaker on a specific topic that the teachers would be looking at. I think there will be a level of anxiety for all adults, guaranteed. I think there'll be a level of anxiety for all the kids. We're not underestimating that. I told the teachers, I met with them all via Zoom the other day, and I made it perfectly clear that our number-one goal when we start is not academics. It's to bring these children back and start that social, emotional, the relationships, the connections, because if we could accomplish nothing else in whatever time we have face-to-face is to start that relationship. Because I think that makes for a better online program. You know, I think it's tough for a young child to connect to somebody online that they may have never met. So we're really looking at that, and we're talking with our teachers to do some Zooms before the year begins for all the students. So even if, you know, the ones that'll be enrolled remote instruction or face-to-face, just to start those relationships, doing open house for parents via Zoom. So everybody can get to see, this is my classroom, this is what it looks like, you know? Parent-teachers conferences will all be done via Zoom, because we don't want to bring adults into the physical environment. We're gonna continue to limit it as much as we possibly can, and we think we can be very effective communicating those type of things via Zoom.
Any other questions or comments on human resources?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I know, like you said, Andy, you guys, I'm convinced have looked at this from every angle, inside and outside. I'm really concerned about our student services cohort of students, special education and all the other various students who are subject to our, who we're obligated to give unique services to. Are we, do we have adequate staff for those who must be in the building and those who cannot be in the building? Buses, all the, you know, I'm familiar with student services students, students who need those services, that mix, being a very labor-intensive bunch. And if we split them based on whatever the different paradigms are, are we well enough staffed for that?
Yeah, it's a great question, and really, it offers me the opportunity to highlight the amazing work that Ann Elser has done with our students in special education.
They're their mask on.
Here in Hollis during remote learning. The program that our students in special education received, I would say, was the most exceptional program in the state of New Hampshire, but put us up against any district in comparison. We did a really excellent job. Ann and I have had a number of conversations, we have daily conversations about the question that you just asked. We're looking at our staffing levels. We would operate very similarly than, that we would in regular education. There may be students who receive remote services. We are also looking at a model where if you have chosen to have a regular education in a virtual environment, you can still have access to our building for some of those services. It's challenging to have OT services delivered remotely. So if a family decides that they want to stay in remote learning, but they want to have services on-site, we can absolutely do that. The other piece is, we work with a number of contracted service providers. So the bottom line is, every kid's going to get what they need.
So I have one question regarding human resources. So in the event a teacher or anybody in the staff is unwilling or unable to be in the classroom, and we can't accommodate a remote situation, maybe all the spots are taken up or whatever, and aside from any activating any leave, family leave, or anything like that, does that situation trigger an LR as part of the CBA?
What do you mean by?
Well, would we have to lay that person off? Because, you know, what happens under that scenario?
Well, staff members have already started to send their documentation in for Americans with Disabilities Act. I would say across the SAU, we probably have 60 requests, which is, many of them were known for a long time, so I'm already getting accommodations. Some of those accommodations are based on what they'll do. So if I'm a special ed teacher and I'm gonna work with small groups, I might request a face shield, I might request Plexiglas, those type of things. So what happens through human resources, working with Bob if it's a special education case, they would literally put Andy Corey and the different pieces of accommodation I need. If it's somebody who is, has their own personal health issue, they would get what I'll say, potentially a priority rating for remote learning. But there's a whole process that governs Americans with disabilities, and there's a process that governs those people that would be taking leave versus COVID and, or if they had childcare issues. And those are all spelled out, and we would work with staff as much as possible. But at some point, we as a school district have a responsibility to deliver curriculum. Now, the problem we face, and we would face because of these unique circumstances, our contracts are already issued. So when we say we're gonna lay someone off, we've already entered into an agreement with them. But we do believe there would be roles for the majority of our staff in remote learning that would have these difficulties attending in-person. And we also envision, at some point, it's either going to get better, and everybody's gonna come back, and, or it's gonna get worse, and we're gonna be 100% remote. And when we were 100% remote, all our employees were able to work.
I guess, hopefully, it would be a corner case, but, so if a particular individual refuses to come in, and we can't accommodate them from doing any type of remote, for whatever reason.
Mm-hmm.
What do we do? We're not, I suspect we're not gonna be paying an individual for not coming in or remote.
What we do then is, we work with legal counsel, and they work us through the process, and we take the necessary steps that we have to take as a district.
And that might, may trigger some things as part of the CBA?
It could.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right.
We certainly retain management rights in the event of a staff person, for whatever reason, who doesn't perform as directed and doesn't have.
Yeah, not an easy topic.
Andy, I.
Andy, I didn't hear what you said about the number of staff across the SAU. Did you say 16, like 1-6?
No, I said 6-0.
6T.
No, 6-0.
6-0. 60 people.
Yep.
Have requested accommodations based on whatever background circumstances they have.
And again, I, I meet every other Friday with superintendents. Our numbers are relatively low compared to what we're seeing. So I know it sounds huge, but some of our neighbors are getting 100 or more. Again, we, we all have pre-existing conditions in a lot of cases around different things with regard to COVID, and I shouldn't have used the word all, but some of us. And many cases, it's a matter of, you know, wearing the mask. You know, that accommodation.
So some of these cases are simple to resolve.
Correct.
They just require some accommodation from the roadmap that you've given us. For example, so my question about certifications and qualifications to teach. You know, I'm, I don't, I haven't followed what the emergency orders, et cetera, might mean. Do we have as a school district, any kind of emergency authorizations to use staff, a staff member who's, say, not certified to teach one grade yet, to fill in for a different grade, say for remote learning or in-person learning, under any kind of emergency basis? Because sometimes I think we get, we're in a corner because of certifications.
Well, the certification that comes into play is, is a special ed would be an example. Preschool is an example. But for the majority of our elementary staff, if we had a need to put somebody, let's say everybody said they could come in and teach face to face at the fifth grade, but only one person could come in at the fourth grade and we need two, we would move that person down.
And, and it's not a certification issue?
It, it is not.
I know some of our paras are certified as classroom teachers, would that be an opportunity? We're talking more in the direction of a crazy situation or, you know, unfortunate. Is that a, is that a flexibility that we could have, or it would be different?
There are many people that hold dual certification.
Right.
That we would look at and have conversations with.
So that is an area of some possible flexibility?
Again, we're we all know that there are discussions going on with the workforce. So in many cases, some of the questions we're asking can't be discussed by me publicly because we're in a contractual process.
Okay. I'm, I'm asking you questions, I, I swear on a stack of bibles, I've had no conversations with anybody about this, except whatever you've said in public, honestly.
No, I'm not saying it for that reason, I'm saying there's an answer to your question, but because of impact bargaining that's going on, I shouldn't be making that.
No, I was just asking you, I was asking from the state, state guidelines perspective. Do, do any school districts, I don't mean our particular membership, I just mean generally, do schools in New Hampshire have the flexibility to move someone who's designated and hired as a para into the classroom teacher role under emergency orders or under, as long as they have the right certifications?
Tammy, the state of New Hampshire, Department of Education always has a process of permission to employ due to any sort of extreme emergency. That's not COVID related, that's just, that exists. We typically don't see that in our elementaries because most of our staff members contain the certifications that allow them to flex between our grades. It becomes more of an issue in our secondary when you are certified to teach a content area.
Okay.
So yes, a process exists.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, I'd like to move to facilities if we can. If there's any questions there.
I do have a facilities question. I know that, you know, we're talking about the consultant that we're speaking with for the HVAC systems and stuff. But I know that we have some HVAC upgrades as part of the H-Smart effort. What is the timing of those upgrades?
The timing right now is the supply chain is slow. So we have our RFPs out to the mechanical vendors who would be doing that. We have all our drawings planned, we're ready to go. It's now a matter of selecting a vendor and seeing what the supply chain will look like. I'll give you an example. We are patiently waiting for all the new lights. We still believe that they will arrive in August, and we still believe that they will, the vast majority will be done before school opens. We have a massive unit ventilator on the roof that would do this whole area as well as other components. That's something, because it's on the roof, we could do some weekend. It might be a school weekend, we've done that before. So there will be some difficulty and we may simply delay some of these pieces. Part of my reasoning, and, and not the primary at all, but when I was talking about the schedule to H-Smart, they were like, oh, we could come in Thanksgiving week because we got five days. We could come in over Christmas because we have 10 days. So they looked at it from a different lens than I was thinking. So we, we will have some flexibility, but the supply chain is, is moving slow. And I think a lot of it is just because we've seen a virus spike in other states and resources have been limited.
So in terms of, of the equipment that is in place, whether it's brand new, just installed, you know, the day before school starts or something that's already in place from before, there, you know, as Andy has said before, we hired John Penny of Penny Engineering. His, his whole specialty is how building components work. And he worked with us through H-Step and he was brought in also on H-Smart. And he has talked in our committee meetings about attending the ASHRAY, which is the standard setting body for HVAC types of equipment performance. And he monitors very closely, week by week, what any standards that are set might, might be able to help us or limit us or whatever the impacts are. So I know he's got his eye on that. He is doing an inventory of every building, room by room, to see what equipment is in each building. Because again, with our schools having been cobbled together over many decades, as we know from the past few years, different rooms have different kinds of equipment, different sections of buildings have different kinds of equipment to perform the necessary air turnover, all of that. Keep in mind, some pieces of equipment, the giant air handler Andy just mentioned, which handles a quarter of this building, the individual classroom air source heat pumps that we put into the primary school a couple of years ago. Those, those don't offer us an opportunity to filter out COVID because the giant air handler is mostly pulling in outside air. So to put in a very expensive filter that would cause it to run very, very high cost because the more resistance you put in, the harder it is for the machine to work. We could do it, but we'd be filtering in outside air. So it'd be pointless. There are, there are a variety, there's a huge inventory of all the different kinds of equipment and how they are optimized both for health and safety, but also for run, operations costs. So that the board and, you know, the staff first and the board will be informed as to why the recommendations that come forward will be what they are. And in terms of supply chain slowdown, that's a euphemism. It's, it's incredible how long the delays are. And the other slowdown that there's been is state agencies, for example, Eversource couldn't commit to their required inspection after the installation because they, every week, their requirements around the COVID have changed. So our, our contractor has been ready to go, we just, our, our hands have been tied.
So suffice it to say, there is supply chain challenges as it relates to H-Step. I want to avoid getting into a H-Step discussion right now.
I just wanted to give you
I understand.
A global sense of how the pieces are working.
Got it, but, so I, I, we will be looking for H-Step opportunities and updates possibly in August, if we can get it. Probably more practically in, in September, based on what we can, how much we can get done relating to the reopening and execution of the reopening and all that. So it is on our minds to get it on a agenda and dive deep into H-Step. Any other facilities questions?
Are the tents considered parts of, part of facilities? The question of tents, outdoor. I was wondering if in terms of availability, if that is possibly going to be, have the same sort of issue that like maybe lots of schools and other places are looking for them too, or do we know that we can acquire those?
We have received two quotes. Rick Bond's principal at the high school was kind enough to coordinate that for the SAU. And we will be moving forward on one of those quotes after we have a little further discussion with the manufacturer. We're looking right now at, I think it's leasing 13 tents across the SAU and they would be set up. If, for, since we're at Hughes, we would actually go out near the gym, there's nice flat grassy areas. And yet it's back from a safety standpoint, so we're also looking where we could set them. So, but just those 13 tents leased across the SAU for the months are going to run about $8,000 per district.
Eight thousand dollars per?
Per district.
District.
Yep. So I think the total cost is just under $25,000.
And is that like one classroom at a time can be, make use of the tent?
Again, it, I would say it depends on the weather. Because I could easily see those children who wanted shade being under the tent and those children who wanted the sun to be in the sun, especially if we were doing like a read out loud or something like that. So easily we could get potentially four, because some of the tents are 30 by 30, others are 20 by 20. We will be looking for donations or to borrow some what I'll call shade tents. Because in many cases, the special ed services will be three or four kids. And it would be nice for them to be able to go out and have their own kind of little tent. So we're pretty much ready to go, kind of once the plan gets approved, then we can move forward with some of the purchasing of things we need to do. I mean, most of it is purchased, all your PPE, all your hand sanitizer, your sprays, your misters, all that, it's already onsite.
And I guess at that, I was, had a follow-up question around the, the expense. But let me word it this way. Once we know, we get an approved plan and we know that the outdoor tents that we need and the expenses, I, I suspect you'll bring forward a, what type of funding strategy you're going to put forward to pay for that?
Yes. We, we plan in August, we, we need to come back to close FY '20, it's kind of the forgotten thing, but we're in the midst of an audit right now. And we'll be talking about the expenses for FY '21. I can tell you right now, you should plan that we'll double our expenses monthly around cleaning products.
Sure.
So the regular monthly expenses around cleaning products are going to double.
And are we getting support from CARES Act types of resources? Do we know what they are?
CARES Act is allocated versus via the formula for Title I. Hollis doesn't accept Title I funds.
Right.
Nor does anybody in the SAU. Based on that formula.
Seven thousand nine hundred dollars.
So we get $7,900. I know you heard about millions coming into the state of New Hampshire. Hollis share is 7,900. Across the entire SAU is just under $35,000. So this notion that the CARES money is going to offset cost.
Is disproportionate to the.
Unless, unless they, in the next round, change the formula, I, I don't see it coming to us.
Any other questions regarding facilities? That is the that is the bulk of the sections that are redlined. I'd like to get to public input, these nice folks have been sitting here very, very patiently. So, and we did move our, our public input to, after initial conversation, board conversation around the plan. So Tammy, you have something?
Sorry, my mistake.
No?
I apologize.
Okay, so let's get the public input going. So the board conducts business through meetings held in public. All those from the community are invited to stay and listen to the board's discussion deliberations and actions. Public input is permitted during the public input portion of our agenda and when the chair opens the floor for public comment. At that time, public input is most welcome and encouraged. Public input, however, is not intended for a community question and answer session with the board or with select members of the administration. Questions will be noted for possible further board discussion. If there are questions that we hear from the community this evening and you want to sponsor those questions as part of our conversation that we were going to reopen, by all means do so. The intention of public input is for the board to gather and consider the sense of the public in making its decisions relating to our posted agenda items. As per our policy BA, when the chair opens the floor for public input, please state your name and address for the record. Address your agenda-related remarks to the chair only. Whenever possible, be specific as to the actions you wish the board to take and why. Generally, questions from the public will be noted, but not, oh, I already covered that. Statements are generally limited to three minutes. The chair will recognize point of order challenges from any board or community member at any time during the meeting for not adhering to posted agenda items or regular order process procedures for conducting a public meeting. Thank you, with that, I will open public input.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Stephanie Jessie, 57, Buttonwood Drive in Hollis. I'm here tonight as a Hollis resident, a parent and a para educator at Hollis Upper Elementary. I love my job, I love the children in this community. I love that at this age, they have gained lots of independence, but they still have a lot of questions and they ask for help. I love that they're curious. My role is to support our special education students in the school, but I do so much more than that. I'm usually the person who notices if your child isn't feeling 100% or seems sleepy or looks sad. I'm frequently the person your child comes to if they need to talk about an argument with a friend or how they've worried because their sister is sick. I'm the person who notices if your child is struggling for any reason and needs a break. And I'm the person who walks the building with them if they want company while they process a problem. I'm also the person who will likely notice if your child needs a break from a mask. I know this year is hard, I know everyone is giving up a lot and we're all struggling. But please know that all the school staff want only the best for your children. The SAU and Superintendent Corey are trying their best to make that, to make sure that students and staff are as safe as they can be under the current circumstances, and I appreciate all their efforts. A big part of my job as a para educator involves providing social and emotional support for special education students. I believe that to perform that job well, I need to be available to all the students, engage and support all students, and bring special education students along with me. That's how I help them gain social inclusion and teach them about being a good friend and a good classmate. My plan for this year also includes being vigilant about watching for any student who's struggling to wear their mask and offering them a break. I can do that. In return, I hope that you'll trust that what our staff is asking for is reasonable and well thought out. Every member of our staff works hard for your kids. We all want to help every student be smart and safe and healthy. We love your children and we want to be there for them. Please support us and help us do that in a way that keeps us all safer.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Brandy Langfield, I live at Levin Black Oak Drive here in Hollis. I first want to thank all of you for all of your hard work, both the SAU and the board. What you've been doing and putting out and the responses to the community has been remarkable and I do appreciate all the efforts that are going into this. Based on that, I do have a few things to comment and some questions for, to take note of, to maybe go over. So first category is just, is around COVID symptoms. And you mentioned a little bit about this, but how will we be transitioning to remote learning? And will they be assigned a new teacher or continue with the existing teachers? I heard you say a little bit about that, but my concern is them transitioning from that in-person model to the full remote teachers and whether that's going to be a smooth transition from what they're currently learning to then into the curriculum that a remote teacher is currently teaching. And, you know, how will expect kids to jump into new teachers' classroom for their remote learning may be, may be challenging. And how will remote teachers as well, from the teacher's standpoint, be able to take on such an influx of students that do have to be moved into a remote learning circumstance? Next is regarding student interactions. Will students be interacting with other classes? How will they be obtaining some of that social, socialization that they have been lacking during an in-person model? And then, the next is regarding some of the teacher changes. How will students be placed for different levels of study? For instance, one of my daughters, I have four daughters, ranging from 10 to 3. And my daughter that's going into fifth grade, last year she was, they had different levels of math. So, and they, they were in groups. So how will levels be taken into consideration during an in-person model as well as a remote So with some of that, we need into my proposed model of a hybrid model that's been mentioned a bit here. Because I think a lot of the challenges I have brought up can be taken care of in some of the hybrid situation. A statement was made that we didn't have a lot of interest in a hybrid model. I think that a percentage of 29% in the primary school, and in the Hughes at 29%, is a significant amount of people. And just within the community, a lot of my fellow parents that have been talking to me as well, I'm here to represent them and their concerns and also their interest in a hybrid model. I think the models that have been presented here today look fantastic, but I also think we need to be taking into consideration a hybrid model as well. That being, if you get back your surveys from both teachers and students, if the numbers cannot be met, where are we going from there? So I think it's more of a preparation and being prepared that if we need to go there, and I liked your comment that, you know, what you are showing here is the bulk of it, and the hybrid would be in the middle there. So one, if we can't meet that six-foot distance, and if more people want to be in-person and our numbers end up being higher, we may need to make some adjustments. So my proposal for the hybrid model is a little bit like what was discussed here, where you have a group of A students and a group of A teachers. You have a group of B teachers and B students. You can select the days as what fits, but let's just use an example of a Monday, Tuesday group A arrives at the school in-person. Wednesday, there's a cleaning day. Thursday, Friday is a group B in-person with their teacher. Saturday is a clean. And the days that whichever group is off, they are assigned still with that teacher. So they're both in-person and remote with the same set of teachers. Sorry, I'm just going to go back to one of the other questions I had regarding the level of study is also, you know, how we're going to handle specials and teachers that need to come in and out for classes.
We're up at, we're past three minutes on this. I would invite you to, by all means, come back to the mic and finish if there's anything else. I just want to make sure other folks get a chance at the mic.
Sure, I have like two seconds just on my pros and.
If no one else is in line, if no one wants to talk, we can do it. You yield? Okay.
Okay, I'm just about done, thank you. So my pros to going with the hybrid model is that both students and teachers are prepared to go in and out of in-person and remote. It provides a reduced class sizes. It gives teacher, teachers are given the opportunity, opportunity to more easily manage their class requirements, and students are given the opportunity for more, more mask breaks, and hopefully a little bit more socialization within their peers.